Please join me in the central seats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the King of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think I just blew it.
Yeah.
I know. Thank you. I know, I know, this is great. Welcome to our April 20th. Whoopsie. And we're throwing. So exciting.
We're here to say.
It's the smart board.
Where are we? April 2nd, 2024, City of Deport Bay Council meeting. Kim, what do you call the role, please?
Councilor Beasley.
Here.
Councilor Beddingfield, I believe is.
She's excused.
Um, Councilor King also excused. Councilor Rick up here.
Mayor Short.
Here.
Councilor Salmon.
Here.
And Councilor Walker.
Thank you.
We do have an addition to the agenda tonight under, um, I may have put it under new business. Uh, we have an applicant for our budget committee and unfortunately he cannot be here this evening, but I think if you review his application, it's Bill Nocella and he has served in different committees. And so I would like the council to consider him to as an applicant to our budget committee later. Um, then now to the consent agenda, we have the minutes of January 10th, work session minutes of February 20th, and accounts payable. Is there a, a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept our consent agenda. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, please.
Yes.
So, um, there were two large credit card bills without, um, said invoices, and I'd have a chance to go in and ask about them. So when there's a really large credit card bill, maybe just a notation would be helpful what they are.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll, uh, give that to Diane. Uh, Yippee, Austin, come on up. You're up. Good evening.
Good evening.
We don't have a report, can I?
We, you know, I sent one late.
That's okay.
There wasn't much on it since I was here two years ago.
Okay.
This is me getting back on track from missing one to a conference.
Okay.
So, not one, the stuff that was on it was actually Deputy Brooks' stuff.
Oh, okay.
And it was all kind of spread out throughout the county. Uh, excuse it, it's five days of training and me, I think this is his last day, so it should be a always old Deputy after tonight.
My dear boss.
Yeah. But yeah, just not, not allowed to report right now at this moment.
He has been, he has been working, he's been going out and checking some reports of people that are getting various vehicles and, and things like that. And then, um, he was helping me do some enforcement with parking where they should be parking and, and stuff like that, plus the ever-present seating, uh, US.
Get worse on that.
Yeah, yeah.
So yeah, it's very apparent, there's a lot of house state foots right now, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Any questions for our deputy? Keep up the good work.
All right. So we'll have more to talk about next time.
Okay. No problem. Okay, come on up, that's our all four of you coming up, or is it just you?
Well, I think it'll reach just me from now, but, uh, obviously, I mean, I'd like to thank, uh, State Council for allowing us to come and speak, uh, to be with me today is our firefighters from June 21, Deport Bay Fire District. We have Jamal Gifford as, uh, Board of Director.
Yeah, that's right.
And myself, Division Chief Tom Jack. Thank you for allowing us to speak today.
Absolutely.
Um, so, uh, the reason why we're here today is, uh, we are seeking to, uh, more or less renew our, renew our local option levy. Uh, and this will be about June 21 to June 23. Uh, because our old annual expire next year due to the 2025. Um, the other thing we want to do is also share with you what our firefighters in our district provides to the community that we serve. And finally, to allow anyone to ask questions if there are any questions afterwards. But, uh, first and foremost, you know, our firefighters are on duty three hundred and twenty, or three hundred and sixty-five days a year, 24 hours a day, uh, seven days a week. Uh, some of the services that we provide that are pretty obvious are fire suppression service, right? The structure fires, firemen fires, vehicle fires and such. Um, but we also provide rescue services that include water rescue, uh, surf rescue, marine board rescue, and many huge accidents. Uh, but what you may not know, uh, what our firefighters provide are advanced level emergency medical services, uh, for citizens. All of our firefighters are EMTs and paramedics, uh, that allow us to respond and treat medical emergencies in a lot of cases, fire in the ambulance actually living on scene. Uh, what this means for the Deport Bay Fire District firefighters is that they provide the same advanced level medical treatment that their ambulance providers, uh, provide, except the only difference is we don't have the ability to transport. Uh, we can provide IVs, we can administer advanced airways, we can, uh, cardio work or shock a patient if, if it's required. Um, and you have certain drugs for cardiac, you know, issues or overdoses and whatnot. Um, other services that the Deport Bay Fire District, uh, provide include liposist. Liposist will include, um, uh, situations where somebody at home or their vehicle's fall, uh, they don't get injured and we're actually able to arrive on scene, sit in that citizen or resident, kind of back up into bed or in the manger of wherever they need to be. Uh, if we allow the ambulance to do this, then the ambulance, if they got on scene and they provided that service, they would actually charge the citizens. We provide that coverage, uh, at no extra cost. Some of the other things that we provide are public assist. Some of those include maybe, uh, vehicle or home lockouts. Uh, anybody have the cats? Cats in the tree, you know? Anybody call for a cat in the tree?
I've never seen a dead cat.
Absolutely. So I mean, I've had a caller too where we had to actually get a cat out of the tree, but, uh, it's very few and far between, they eventually find one where you can have. Some of the other services that we provide are smoke detector, carbon moniters, alarm checks and installations. Uh, some of the homes that we have here on shows, they have, uh, very high ceiling and it's very difficult for people to actually, uh, reach, uh, those detectors to actually change the adder. Uh, we create adder signs, uh, to allow our responding firefighters to locate adders much quicker. Uh, we also attend community events, safety fairs, public education, we collect toys, uh, the Toys for Joy's, uh, foundation during the holiday season. We participate in the special Monday's annual polar plunge, uh, we do the Easter egg contest, which I think was last Saturday, um, and some other things.
Yeah, they can fly away.
Yeah, they flowers.
National Miguel.
National Miguel.
Not again this year.
Yep. And, uh, of course, we assist with, uh, the surf team who, you know, who we hope to like. So it leads, uh, to this, why are we seeking, uh, this lobbying and the importance of it? Uh, the permit detector that we currently have right now is not active on our fire department operations. Uh, the current fire local option, let me inspire says, we stated earlier, June 30th of 2025. So the proposed five-year local option, let me will fund, will continue to allow us to, uh, our response capabilities with enough personnel to adequately address and maybe cause for service, such as fires, the drilling of vehicles and wildland, rescues, medical emergency, motor vehicle accidents, hazardous materials and more. Uh, it will allow us to maintain three fire stations. Uh, it will allow us to maintain and replace critical life-saving equipment such as jobs of life, uh, cardiac monitors and such, and will allow us to set aside funding to, uh, for apparatus replacement in the future. Um, what I think is important to understand is that we all understand that, uh, the cost for goods and services are increasing and, uh, the fire services see exactly that. Um, it is not uncommon for a brand new fire truck these days to cost a million dollars. It's, uh, very shocking, um, and it, we don't see any of this in sight. And so until this inflation begins to stop or, uh, slow down, we're going to continue to run into challenges. Uh, the Deport Bay, uh, Road by Protection District Board has calculated the cost of providing services over the upcoming five-year period based on historical, current, and future projections. Uh, since last local option levy was passed in 2018, uh, the cost of providing services has increased more than revenue collections. Uh, due to, as we stated earlier, inflation, the cost of goods and services, the cost of life-saving equipment, cost of personnel services, and then the cost of firefighting apparatus. What would happen or what would, would it mean if we don't, uh, have a successful levy? Well, it will affect the fire district's ability to respond with adequate number of firefighters, uh, to handle fires, rescues, and medical emergencies safely and timely. Uh, maintenance of our three district fire stations will have to be deferred or leased to other entities for revenue, which will cause us to decrease the number of fire stations within the district, uh, potentially causing our ISO rating to increase, uh, therefore potentially increasing homeowner insurance premiums. Uh, safety of personnel will be compromised if funding is not available to maintain life-saving equipment, and last aid funds will not be available to deposit into a reserve account for future apparatus replacement in accordance with the recommended tenure, uh, apparatus replacement plan. So how much more will citizens pay compared to the local, the current local option? Uh, basically, the cost of the proposed local option levy compared to current, uh, local option levy is an increase of thirty cents per one thousand dollars of assessed value. Uh, so for example, if your, if your home, it assessed value is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you would pay an additional eight dollars and seventy-five cents a month, and you would end up paying a hundred and five dollars annually more, uh, for fire service. Uh, if your home costs five hundred thousand dollars, then that would be an increase of twelve dollars and fifty cents a month, annually it would cost a hundred and fifty. Uh, if your home, uh, assessed value is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, your monthly rate increase would go up eighteen dollars and seventy-five cents, and then your additional cost per year would be two hundred and twenty-five. And then last day, your home was assessed at one million dollars, uh, your monthly fee would go up to twenty-five bucks additionally, and then annually it would go up to three hundred dollars. So, uh, you know, we talked a little bit about, you know, our personnel and what they provide and the services, uh, they provide. We're very proud organization of the type of service that we provide to citizens within our fire district that encompasses Otter Rock all the way north to the Keys, and we want to be able to continue to provide that coverage, uh, to adequately address the medical needs. So at this point, I'll leave it up to any questions that, uh, City Council wants.
Thank you, Chief. You think just thirty cents is giving you enough with the equation?
Well, we, the projections allow us to stay, uh, right at that in the black, avoiding having more than that. Uh, so that's what we projected, we, we anticipate that that's gonna adequately cover what we need over the next five years, but, uh, obviously, these are uncertain times right now and, and it's very, very unpredictable.
Right. Mayor? Yes. I'm sorry, go ahead, Fred. No, you go ahead. You can go ahead if you have a question.
Uh, Mayor, this isn't the only funding measure that's going to be on the ballot. Uh, I understand that, uh, Oregon State Community College is going to add about a thirty million dollars or more measure. I think it would be, uh, a really good move on the part of this City Council to endorse, uh, this, uh, funding measure, to put our, uh, way of approval behind it. And I think we should direct our city recorder to write a resolution to that effect. And I would encourage the council that this be our only resolution for a funding measure as we go forward. There are plenty of good things to be done, but we have to have something like this.
Any other, yes, Brad?
Yeah, so I have got a, um, a question from my neighbor which I couldn't answer, so he reached out.
Sure.
Um, so he, so he was wondering, and he got answers, but I think that the flyer that we got mailed didn't answer things, so just wanted you to be aware of some of the questions.
Sure, I'll do my best to answer them.
So he's wondering if the fire department has other funding besides property tax, so it wasn't clear to him, and I didn't know how to answer that.
I think that's a very, uh, good question. Uh, our main and only permanent source of income is through property tax. That's the only way the, that we're actually able to get sta-, uh, funding to adequately, uh, provide finances for operation and our, and our personnel. There are other means that we can try to, um, seek through grants, uh, through the state or, uh, the federal grant program, there's a few of them out there, one of them being Sabre. Uh, some problems with that is that they're very competitive and we have attempted to, uh, renew, uh, a Sabre grant that we, uh, had just ended last year. Uh, we tried to renew that and we returned it down. So those grants are very competitive, um, as, as you can imagine, there are a lot of fire organizations that have submitted for those funds to those grants, um, and it's just a matter of them weaning everybody else, so, um, we also have some local grants that we try to go to, but they don't really add up to too much. Uh, you know, every bit of dollars that we see that come in are very helpful and useful to the district. Uh, we've, uh, actually applied for grants through the tribe, you know, I believe in the past we've been successful, but in comparison, i- it's not adequate to continue the operations of our district.
Thank you. How much of, of your budget comes from the property tax?
Uh, just, uh, about, close to a hundred percent, yeah.
So levy on top of that is more replacing equipment and?
So, yeah, it would be replacing the equipment to continue to fund our firefighters to remain on duty 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and six, total of a year.
So it's paying a hundred percent of basic cost, but the levy is to increase?
The ability to fund, uh, put aside some funds for, uh, a reserve fund actually to, uh, prepare for the replacement of fire engines. Uh, and let me just add real quick, we recently bought a brand new fire engine, uh, and the only way we were actually able to do that is through lease, leasing agreements that we have for our cell towers that we have here at Deport Bay and over at Queen Beach. So we essentially, uh, sold twenty years, let's see, we received twenty years of payment for a fifty-year, uh, leasing agreement, um, and, and that's why then enough money for us to be able to purchase a brand new fire engine, a brand new water tender. And this is the first time that the district has actually seen a brand new fire engine purchased within the district in over twenty-six years. Um, the engine that we currently have right now is a 1998, uh, fire engine, uh, and the, uh, and that's not our first out fire engine, that's a reserve engine. The other engine that we, uh, are in the process of, you know, maybe sending it out for refurbishment, um, and that's something that selling those, uh, leasing agreements allowed us to do as well is to go ahead and, uh, have a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, refurb project done, you know, twelve, non-twelve year old, you know? So I'll pay extra questions.
Yes, I do, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Mayor, a 1998 fire engine doesn't seem that old to me anymore. I don't know why it is. I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, do a resolution in support of this levy.
Is there a second? I'll, I'll second that. It's been moved to the second to develop a resolution in support of the, uh, five-year local option levy. Is there any moment, uh, any discussion on the motion?
So, um, it's, it's a resolution, it's just, uh, expressing support?
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor, thank you for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you for your presence in the battery of my smoke detector.
Very tall ceilings and my husband falling down.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for your service. Yes, thank you, thanks, Chief.
All right. Well, move on to our, uh, Commissioner and Committee Report, there's nothing from the neighbors, see, he goes, nobody's here. Harper, Ted, I see you're here.
Yep.
Report for us this evening.
They had a pretty good meeting, last meeting, and, uh, Roy had his report, and first of all, we're really excited to see the, the new, um, itinerary for the restoration. Uh, we're pretty darn excited to see that, that, that's pretty cool stuff.
It is awesome.
And, um, uh, we've got cameras up now, there's a total of nine functioning, and there's a tenth one on the way. And, uh, there was a little bit of concern that some of the cam, or none of the cameras really have face identity here, they can't even really read a license plate. So we're hoping maybe we might be able to upgrade that in some way, or, you know, they don't do as much good unless we can see who it is, you know? But we do have them now, so, and they're all pointing to the top of the, top of the game, waiting on the restroom, down, uh, down at the, uh, boat ramp, so no more vandalism happening down there. And, uh, so that was pretty good data. Um, he's got all finger docks in, he's, uh, he's waiting for some hard work for some of the finger docks on, uh, dock before. And, uh, they're looking to, uh, uh, replace next week the Santa Saver, which is the pump.
Yeah, it's the sanitary pump, pumps out the boats, uh, in the charter boats, in the regular boats, uh, kicker boats, they're, they're sewer tanks on the vessel, so they don't have to pump out the sea.
The city got approved for, um, Organizing Marine Board Grant, uh, a total of about eight thousand, some five hundred and a dollar to do the Santa Saver. That also allows us to do some other work down there. It's a pretty, pretty big grant amount.
Very much needed, of course, obviously. Um, uh, and then he presented us with a budget, uh, wishlist, and it looked to us like pretty much everything was, was pretty darn necessary on the budget wishlist. So I'm sure you guys probably already have a copy of that, so we approved all that. Um, and then as far as the dock leases go, um, I abstained from pretty much everything on that, that whole deal, since it does affect trade winds quite a bit, quite a bit. Uh, basically, we decided that it's really not up to the Harbor Commission to decide, as long as there's proper insurance and the docks are safe, was our main concern as far as the commission, the commission was concerned.
They will be providing a recommendation to you on, on the sixteenth, right?
Yeah, I, I, I saw a letter from Carla.
Right, Jack would read that.
And I, and I assumed that you, you guys all got that letter also, that's not until the sixteenth. Okay, yeah, yeah, so, um, and I, of course, abstained from the vote and everything else, so just to let you know. Um, we already talked about the budget, uh, the fish plant lease, uh, we pretty much decided upon further inspection, you know, once it gets inspected, for this next time, it's pretty important that we keep Jeff in there, just because we don't have any coral fishing here, it might be really tough to find another tenant, you know, if, if, uh, he decided not to, not to renew his lease, so. Um, uh, and Jack and Kim, they did a tour of the plant. They were pretty impressed, pretty impressed, there was a lot of improvements that he's done, and it sounded like some of them may not have been approved by the city, but overall it sounded like he had made some pretty darn good improvements. And, uh, last one of these commissioners concerns, um, I, I asked him to, to take off the, the Harbor restoration off of trying to get some kind of, uh, accurate profit and loss for the harbor itself. And it's a little bit confusing that a lot of the Harbor restoration stuff is on there when it's, you know, the profit loss is supposed to be from past times rather than current times. And that's about it, am I saying?
I think we covered it all.
Okay, good, good.
Any questions? Yeah. Um, how, how are we doing a profit loss between, uh, fuel revenues and say, uh?
It, the way it is now, you know, there is no profit loss. You know, we, we got a revenue sheet, we got an expenditure sheet, you know, I mean, we, that there's, there's no software to, to produce a profit loss statement.
Pardon me, tell story, they haven't seen one recently, I need to redo their one for them, like their dues, they, our restoration, so they really don't have. Last one I think I provided them was probably about a month and a half ago.
Not even profit and loss statement though, just in terms of fuel costs and fuel sales.
Correct, okay, yeah.
Well, I can guarantee you it's worth a lot of money, you know, and you can get fuel up in Lincoln City for cheaper than what the, what the city sells for.
Yeah, we'll walk there and he'll get them, huh? Fuel then.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, that's, uh, definitely an option.
Yeah, I mean.
But, you know, I mean, there's no low caps on it either, you know, so a little bit concerning that our fuel is way up there for sure.
Any other questions?
Mayor, if I could, Ted, I want to thank you for a superior report, I really enjoy your reports, they're very, uh, transparent, and I appreciate that. Um, I haven't seen a budget wishlist, just for your information. Um, and I agree with you that it's important to keep Jeff Mofino in this operation because appearances count, and when the state looks at harbors, uh, they look, they like to look at harbors that are, uh, active in the, in the fisheries business, and that puts us in line for all sorts of, uh, benefits, I believe. Uh, as far as the penal statement on the fuel, I don't know how you generate that, uh, but I would like to, I agree with, uh, Councilor Rick, I'd like to see the, the, uh, figures on the sales versus the, you know, the cost of the fuel, to make sure that we're, you know, we're square on that, so, thank you.
For sure, for sure, yeah, you know, and pretty much, uh, how the harbor doing overall, you know, not just the fuel, but, you know, the, the, pretty much all the revenues that we're getting and, and all the expenditures, you know, the, pretty much the payroll is a, it's a big one.
That's because everybody's on the payroll.
Yeah, right. And rightfully so, to an extent, you know?
Any other questions? Thank you, Ted, we appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you for serving the commission, it's wonderful.
You go ahead, you go ahead. I kind of enjoyed it.
Good. It's important. Ken, are you here for parks or salmon, or both?
Or both.
Oh, come on up.
Thought you were busy at the town.
Oh, they are? Well, that's good.
Any questions for me, or?
You want to, well, you want to, did you have a parks, you had a parks meeting last, uh, was that last week?
We, we did, and it was postponed because of weather and, uh, what else did we do?
We had to postpone the tour because of weather and because they, what decided that there was two people missing, the sheriff would only stay until the top of the hour, and so that, so they postponed doing that. We mostly talked about, um, some, we talked about some of the projects and some different ideas around that, um, and they're supposed to, when they get back together, our group kind of talked about what are the things they want to see the, um, see get done in the parks, but the tour role, the tour role and format more for that. I know when I was walking on Mount Morpoint on Sunday, I saw some things that we could need to start, we need to do, so, um, it'd be good to have the list, make it easier for public parks.
Yeah, now that weather is getting better, we can get out there and kind of march around and see what's going on. And we do have another meeting on the seventeenth, I think, that she's got, so we'll, we'll get a lot done then.
Yeah, and we talked about the bridge, we partly, we had a little bit of a problem with the bridges, so we talked about that, mostly just give them some updates about some things, so, any questions?
The county work pre-scheduled for next week. The county work pre-scheduled for next week, to do the nature trail improvements, staffs coming.
Wonderful, yeah, Ted, because I'm going to be there.
They never, they didn't trim, you know, whatever, we were training the train to bring them out.
Yeah, so that would be in the report too, to see how much we can get done in a few days.
The group is really eager to see what they can do in volunteer, we talked about a spring coming up there, and we talked about, um, fairer student things that they might be able to do. It's just finding the date that's probably going to be a bit more challenging, you know?
Yeah, this coordinate everything together, that's real, that can be difficult.
Challenging, absolutely, absolutely. Any questions for Ken on parks? And you had your little, um, T-shirt.
That was, that was fun.
Down at Neighbors for Kids the other day, that was wonderful.
So, the salmon enhancement is going good, and all those little kids up there being fed every day, and, and we've got, uh, you know, over eighteen thousand, I wouldn't. I think that's going very smooth.
Good, they must look like something when they all come up to eat, right?
It is, I mean, I can't wait till the kids see that boil, you know, it's like, hey, we're sure glad to hear breakfast, you know? So, but that's going very smooth, and fortunately, with Dennis in the beginning, those, those guys were right on things, so, I think we're very fortunate. Other than that, I think it's, it's great.
Good, kids are very happy to get their T-shirts, so, so.
Yeah, for me, you know, and the, the other one part of it is, uh, which is kind of fun, you can see the other kids want to get involved, you know, how do I get one? What can I do to get on this, because it seems kind of neato, and, uh, then hopefully we'll get some more workers.
It was really fun to see how many of them went to be, and like, knew him and, and it just was really neat to see that, because some of these kids have been doing it for years, so. So you had a lot of the kids here, Autumn, did you ever do, when you were growing up, did you guys ever do that? I know that there's some people on our commissions and committees that have it, so, it's kind of neat, you know, that program's been around so long.
I think the whole thing is great for the community, it's always good, you know, whatever, that's all, everyone, everything seems to be running very smooth on that, but.
That's wonderful.
Any questions, guys?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate all you're doing.
Oh, I appreciate being here, it's way too much fun. Thanks, yeah.
Uh, okay, public comments, are there any public comments this evening?
That was a good one, second, Mr. Zupan, I'm saying his name wrong.
That's okay, it's, people usually do, it's all right, I'm all right with it. Um, my name's Christian Zupančić, uh, address is six one five Broadway Street in Seaside, Oregon. I'm here, as you probably all know, for CA and Bridget White. I just wanted to bring up a couple of things, two, two things this evening, um, I know that you have an update for the, um, white property, property line adjustment and everything else. Right after public comment, so, hopefully what I have to say can help inform some of that a little bit. The two things that I wanted to talk about are the property line adjustment agreement itself, and that agreement is in the works. But we really, we tried to simplify it quite a bit by including just the waterline materials as a part of the deal, we really tried to carve out everything else that might have, you know, possibly complicated that. Our understanding is that those waterline materials, we're talking about pipes and all the valves and everything else, that they're already there, the city already has them. And so it shouldn't be too much of an issue to just include them as a part of the deal, so that, um, CA could actually work on the right of way and put them in. If for some reason that didn't work out, though, if for whatever reason, we figured out that the value of those materials is about ten thousand five hundred, and that, and again, if that was not going to be part of the property line adjustment agreement, we just add that to the price. So that would be, uh, I believe twenty-eight thousand five hundred as a total price, but if the waterline materials are there, it's back down to, um, eighteen thousand. Uh, the reason, and again, we've really got to get this, uh, the property line adjustment agreement underway as soon as possible. Uh, the city attorney, that's Corey Blake, he sent me some insurance information, but from what I can tell, uh, the whites are not covered under that until some kind of an agreement is in place, and that's really, that's really what they're worried about. We got to have something in place before any of those insurance provisions trigger, so the city is covered, which is great, but it's obviously the whites' land, and so that creates a problem. They don't, a- and so they've got really no issue with Salmon Enhancement Committee coming up, they're city workers. But the neighbors with kids, the fin clipping, that sort of stuff is coming up very, very soon, and they don't really want to let those folks up there, because it's just, it's too much of a liability issue until we get this property line adjustment agreement in place, so, the faster we can get that done, I don't, I don't think it will be an issue. Once the city has that land, no problem, obviously, so, time is definitely of the essence on that one, um, we want to try to carve out these liability issues completely. Um, I will continue to talk to Corey about the terms, but again, we're trying to simplify down. The second thing that I wanted to talk about is the right of way authorization, um, the permit to work in the right of way. Uh, at this point, we really just need to know who to talk to, and how to get the process started, is there an application, what is it? I know that Corey, the city attorney, was saying he was going to put us in touch with, uh, the right people, I think that that's getting underway, um, same deal. Time is of the essence on this thing, um, it, the, the construction season is beginning, if not, um, well underway. The drawings for the right of way are, are definitely underway, they should be completed by the fifteenth of this month or even sooner. Uh, the reason that time is, is, uh, an issue here is that the whites, they've already got their, their single family home approved. They submitted their house plans back in June, it's under review, but they can't do anything until there's some kind of a plan for putting these utilities in place. He's, again, he's willing to do the work in the right of way, he just has to, he just needs a process to get the authorization to do that. There's also a couple of residents up Stanley Street, some folks who are waiting to build, to move in, in fact, there's a lady who I understand has all her stuff in storage, and she's just awaiting, uh, you know, to get a residence built up there and utilities in place, so that she's got somewhere to, to live as a permanent resident, so. Same thing here, time is of the essence on both of these things, hoping that we can get both of these underway as quickly as possible. I'll do everything I can to work with Corey to make sure that we get what we need and that we can keep the process flowing, but that's really all I wanted to explain, really, is what the status of both of these things are, how we're trying to kind of distill them down. And like I said, I know that there is an update right after public comment, so I will stick around if anybody has any questions. Thanks.
Okay, and you want to go into the updates first?
Well, uh, my update was going to be that I sent some information, we got some, I had some discussions with our city engineer about the proper way to make sure that the city is protected and to be able to allow CA to do the sewer work, uh, which is what I understood, but, uh, I'm hearing a lot of things that, um, he's, he's saying that I am completely unaware of, so, uh, I don't know anything about the revised agreement that talks about the, uh, the supplies, that was the one that I thought was everything was split out, so, I think before I can give you an actual update, I will have to speak to our city attorney. Uh, as I, and, uh, I believe the city is the right people to do the right of way permit, um, but Kit Fox is in the office tomorrow. I'll verify with him on that, and then we can get back to you on that, um, and let me know, so, I'm going to have to get with Corey, because he's saying a lot of things I'm completely unaware of.
So, one of the things I heard was that, um, it's to know who to work with, wouldn't it be Kit?
Well, that's what I'm thinking, it would be Kit, right, well, it would be Kit and, and us, public works, so it's the right of way permit, right?
Yeah.
Because it's, it's, it's county board of the side of the right of way, you know, the county has the staff, so, so that would be the answer, and I'm guessing that Corey is waiting to, or he was going to, I haven't heard anything, so.
But I'm trying to figure out, for that part of it, it might be like Brady and Kit rather than the attorney, right?
Right, I, I figured I would talk to Kit tomorrow for sure, and then just, I will email Christian right away, I'll let him know. So, does I talk to Kit tomorrow, I'll let you know, but I'm pretty sure it's us.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, now we're moving on, yeah? Uh, Shell Avenue dedication, has everybody had a chance to read this document or what? So, open it up for discussion.
Mayor?
Yes?
You know, uh, I think of the CA white issue, I think of this issue, I think of other, uh, encroachments. Uh, what's interesting about this one is it's the, uh, city's encroaching on private property, and, and, uh, I know that in many other cases, it's the other way around. I like the idea of approaching these in the easiest way to solve the problem. And I think that this, uh, this memo says it all, that, uh, that the staff is comfortable with the slight assumption of risk. And that we should probably, uh, do this and get it going. I like that it was nice and clean, you know, there wasn't a lot of other things attached to it happening, it's just straightforward, right?
Yeah. So, um, do I understand that there would not be a maintenance pond, that's what the regulation is?
Correct.
Or making sure that the sidewalk is designed if we need it to be?
They've got the designs already in, and everything's been approved by our city engineer, and if we can have the city engineer on site, or often, as we discussed, that would be a really good way for him to keep an eye on the project. But I did speak to, the original wasn't optional, so, the city can acquire, the city can also take the risk on it, and I spoke to both our city engineer and our city attorney about it. With the knowledge that, yes, we're going to have outside risks, but, you know, our city engineer watched these things, he did the inspection, and he was comfortable with the drawings, that it would be done correctly.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the dedication of the encroaching portion of the Shell Avenue, do you see?
Is there a second? I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the dedication of the, um, encroaching portion of Shell Avenue. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Um, maintenance agreement with the Oregon State Marine Board, is there any questions on this? It's just the same maintenance agreement that we do every year.
Just more money, you know?
Your Honor, I approve, we, uh, I approve we approve the maintenance agreement and authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to accept the reported state marine board maintenance agreement as submitted, is there any discussion on, on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. We have a letter that we need to send in to the renewable energy grant, uh, wanting, or identifying him as our, uh, contact. Has everybody had a chance to read this letter? Uh, just so that council, uh, is aware, the, uh, group that's working on this, that are coming up with the narrative, we need information for this. They will probably be coming back at the next meeting, or, but I definitely encourage them to come back at the next meeting to give you, uh, a brief idea of what they're actually asking for. And, I mean, you know it's a planning grant, but I think it's important for you to, to get briefed on this whole thing, because that was one of the things we talked about, John, before the council gave the official proof of design, design for this, so. Um, from what I'm reading, it's, it's, I think you'll be happy with it, but I do think that the council needs to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Kit's a submit button, yeah.
Absolutely.
I move that we approve the, um, letter as presented, um, for the renewable energy grants over these time. Thank you, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to accept the letter of authorization, uh, for the community renewable energy grant, is there any discussion on the motion?
I just want to say I liked the way that that was couched, uh, in relation to two and a half day power outage that we had.
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Um, we've got a first reading of an ordinance. Uh, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Deco Bay establishing the position of city administrator and combining the positions of city administrator and city recorder into city administrator recorder position, is there a motion to accept this ordinance entitled on light? I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to accept an ordinance of the city council of the city of Deco Bay establishing the position of city administrator and combining the positions of city administrator and city recorder into city, or recorder position, um. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mayor, I'd like to ask some questions about this, okay?
What, what is, oh, I just wanted to let, you know, that Councilor Rec came in and suggested some really good changes, that, um, so I thought I would just, they're not in your packet this time.
Oh, okay.
But, for instance, if you have the documents in front of you, on section three, I'm going to be ordering some things that the, you read the sixty. Um, she said to hi, uh, section three instead of just, just say, shall be hired slash appointed, so it's just adding the hired. Um, section five was just saying that, uh, the city recorder may appoint such assistance department heads employees as necessary to the proper function of the city, provided that the city has budgeted for those costs, that was added by Fran, Councilor Rec, excuse me. Um, on the job description, which she changed the word incumbent, which is a very awkward word anyway, to employee. And, uh, the question about vulnerable, um, Councilor Rec asked, she, she asked about whether or not that the invulnerable would, uh, conclude a person with felonies. And her, well, I confirmed this with our insurance provider, there are some felonies, she didn't list them out for me, that would not include their okay, okay felonies, I don't know how that works. But she said mostly with these bombs, it's looking for a detriment and, you know, that sort of stuff, so, but yes, the answer is yes, it does. The other thing, um, on the job description, she added, suggested added that the, uh, ability to assure that all internal controls are in place and verified. Um, we make sure that we have that internal controls, and then under expenses, also, uh, this is in the agreement. Um, she clarified that the administrator recorder had per, instead of just saying per reasonable expenses, she's saying per GM rates, stay for hotel, not on meals. And then anything in above, like say for example, um, anything above, like if I go somewhere and I end up spending more than the per GM, and I want it recovered. If it's more than fifteen percent, I would have to come to the council and talk about why I prefer it. I don't really foresee that happening, but it's a good provision, but in there. Finally, three point nine civic activities, this was for the I I N C agreement, and I'm sure they have a reason for it, but I struck it after talking to Fran, Councilor Rec, because it didn't seem like it. It really, uh, e- everything else is already covered under professional expenses. So those were her excellent changes, is, is everybody okay with incorporating?
Yes, yes.
Yeah?
Well, Mayor, I mean, is there a written, you haven't written a copy of this, that we can look at?
This is just the first reading, so.
Yeah, she'll have it for the second reading.
So this will be incorporated, is that, is this going to say a copy of, when will we say a copy?
When we get the next packet.
And that's going to be the final look?
Right.
Okay.
Um, it, Cas, uh, basically, I can certainly provide a few things, but, I think.
No, that's, that's fine, that'll be fine. No, that's, that's fine, that'll be fine. Uh, I, I do have a question here, this is the new position. And I'm assuming that we are, that this is meant to be for city reporter Wallenberg, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, are we, are we then, since this is a new position we're creating, is this okay? And we run this by our council? Aren't there, are there hiring rules that we're bound to as a public agency?
This is just a change in title and duties. We don't need to go into the senior.
The Jimmy's on Orange.
Yeah.
She's on.
Well, I mean, I, I think it would be worth asking, don't you?
We can, it's not, we not need it in my opinion, but we can act.
I just, I, I've been told there are hiring rules, I mean, I thought, I mean, I haven't been told personally, I've just watched people involved in hiring and they, they seem to advertise these positions when they're new or newly created, so. Just wondering. I mean, is there a state law that we're running up against?
No, not with this.
No, okay, fine. They don't, they don't waste, I don't want to waste your time.
I'm happy to do any research you'd like me to do.
Okay, any other questions for Kim? We had to update our. No, this is the first reading.
Okay.
So, yeah. This is the first reading, any questions?
We still didn't follow up though.
You don't? Oh, that's right, um, me, I never did before we did.
Oh.
We were doing mid discussion.
Oh, oh, yeah, that's. So, the motion was to read by title online, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we got that then. So, um, the, we think county homeless advisory committee wants the council's blessing that I'm serving on that committee, so we added that assignment, we've forgotten that in January, so that. And then we're gonna strike a council payable, it's, you know, every month I go through the same exact payables that all of you do, so I believe, you know, if there's a question on payables, it's gonna be for all of us and not just.
And since we don't send the checks out until after, unless it's a rare occasion until a council meeting, figuring that if the council wants anything told, we can pull it easily.
So, is our motion to accept the committee assignments as updated? It's been, is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the committee assignments as updated, all in favor, oop, is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
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 Yes, yes.
Okay.
All agree, yes.
Um, the grid pump, we had a, um, sole source action request here for the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. Brady, are you implicated on this?
Yeah, it's a, well, go ahead.
Well, I'm just gonna say, I just gave you a form, Brady can tell you about it, but I just gave you the sole source form because what I wanted to do is start introducing that form, so we're just going to start purchasing that we have to justify why it was sole source and Brady can tell you more about that.
So, yeah, we found out, so the grid system's been down, which takes the, um, heavy material out of wastewater, coffee grounds, egg shells, things like that. It's a real important process in our final treatment when it goes to the biosolids and then also our final effluent into the ocean. And the grid removal is a big piece of that, it's been down for three months, so it's been kind of collecting in a settling area, but we do need to get it fixed as part of our requirement from D E Q. The, the system that was put in, unfortunately, it would be a total replacement of close to quarter of a million dollars to replace the whole entire grid system. And so we've been looking for a pump, um, which is, uh, this Hayward Gordon, it has, the company has sold to Deco's, so they're the only company that carries this pump that we can use. We tried to get other prices and did all our homework, worked on it for three months and where we had to involve tag a little bit to really do the homework for us to find this company. But we did find a pump, we can, we can go through Hayward Gordon and get the pump to say, instead of looking tag, we could just use tag too, but this was kind of the only option for us. Just because it is absolutely unavailable. But what it would do is it would replace the pump and then they're gonna have some remodeling done, we'll bring our system back and refurbish what we already have, so it's basically the pump and then we won't have to buy brand new system. And this, this should last fifteen, twenty years. As long as, like the other pump, the other one I'm writing in two thousand and three.
Oh.
So it's, it's been quite.
Is this on the project list?
Uh, this is one of a contingency.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's in my, it's in our cabinet room, it's probably the thing to do, but no, I haven't had to do this part.
So are we, what are, what are we doing, are we buying this?
Yeah, we have to buy the pump.
When?
Uh, since we're getting it approved, it's, it's, it needs to be expedited.
Just out of curiosity, this grid removal, coffee grounds, the egg shells, et cetera.
Right.
Is, is that something that can be reduced through a public relations campaign or?
Um, we can, but you're always gonna get grid in wastewater, I mean, some rattle of sand and it's mainly, it's just, that's just a general description of grid, but it's heavy materials in wastewater.
If we wanted to have a public relations campaign, the best one would be on to, would be on the White.
Uh, yeah.
Or what they call like RAGs.
Swifers and, and crushable white, that's absolutely true, that's, that's the big one, and it's true throughout the whole nation.
Is there any questions for Brady?
Yeah, this, this is the only group that really makes the, that's why it's sole source.
Yeah, it's the system that we have.
Makes the particular one that fits the system we have without, without doing a complete remodel. Which is, this often happens in water and wastewater because plants, a lot of times back in the past, they were designed around these things and then by the time it's time to replace them, a lot of those companies no longer exist. So, there will be times where we have to redo a system, but luckily not this time.
Yeah, it's a lot of times it's, you can't buy that product anymore, you gotta buy it all new and this is kind of skirting around that fact, you're already getting lucky. Even though it's spending.
Is there a motion to accept the, um, bid of thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety dollars for the, what is that thing?
It's grid pump, it's a pool item also.
Could I also ask a motion to read this, could, a motion to approve the sole source determination?
Oh, I'm interested, right.
I move that we do a sole source, sole source determination on the grid pump.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the purchase price of thirteen thousand nine hundred ninety dollars as submitted under sole source determination. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, okay. We've got an update on the sole source.
Well, I wanna talk to you, um, just this, this tag, the automation with this hundred eighty-nine thousand dollar plant, it's more just information right now, we're working on getting that split out because we wanna look at what we need to get done closer to this this week here, which would be buying a lot of, a lot of these parts and things have a long lead time, so sometimes it's easy to get this, but I was hoping to get it split out, um, on this before tonight, but we didn't. So this is really just an information, um, Brady, have they indicated to you at all what this split might look like?
Oh.
Versus equipment versus labor, and that's what your contract was.
Yeah, it was two thirds equipment to a third labor.
And so this, 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 it, Brady, maybe, the P L C upgrade is actually very important. Especially if we're running into problems with what the planning system is. And it's about the communication with our plants. Now, we're upgrading the internet at both of the plants because the internet's terrible, but the idea is that these are our alarms, these tell us, tell the public works guys when something's wrong. And right now, it's
miserable.
Kind of a landmine, whereas they could simply have this, the way, it was a similar system in Clackamas County where they would either have the tablet or it would go on their phone, private phone is better now, and they would get these notifications. More immediate notifications, um, probably more sensitive notifications before things get work. So it's a really, it's a, it's a big upgrade, uh, but it's, it's an important one.
So the, the point of separating them out, the labor from the equipment is one can be, go through this year's budget?
We were hoping to get them, yeah, because of a lot of lead time and cost, so if we wait till after July, we could get some of the most expensive components of the P L C, which is the program logic controller unit for the SCADA, which is the automation of all the wastewater.
And there's money to budget for it now, uh, for part of it now, because the reason there is is because we're not spending all that money on the wastewater or the water treatment foundation, because we have to get a new plant, so.
So is there time to, um, look at this again at our next meeting or should we just authorize?
We can, Brady.
Um, I, we were hoping to try to get, we had some of the funding residual at the wastewater plant for sure. We haven't done a whole lot of anything there this, this year.
Yeah.
So, um, that, we were hoping to get the equipment in just so we could get it ordered and hopefully in and paid for for the next, and then the next part of it would be more simplified and we know more.
So are, is there?
Also, that's very important, so you folks know, it is a pool item.
Meaning it's split out into many different units?
Blining reach and.
So what I'm, I'm trying to find out is if our next meeting, which is on the sixteenth, is that gonna be adequate time or should we take some action tonight?
Um, I, uh,
Two weeks.
Yeah, we could, we could be buying for two weeks, yeah, absolutely. We could get more, hopefully more information, we're hoping to get this.
How can we still, right, and I wanna make sure that, to get something from Tag because this is a big enough item that we really should look at whether or not we should buy it off our P. But I actually have a meeting with, uh, Mr. James on this tomorrow because I wanna talk about the security aspect of it. Because there is a problem in how it relates to what they signed up for with Blining or what Blining tried to have them do, which really does not have any security, um, which is a problem, so.
Yeah, getting the totalizer numbers of the flows that they send us through a cellular system that's not secure. Well, a little bit.
It's a little bit secure.
Doesn't have a firewall like the man that we have through the state.
So I'm gonna get more information about that, so I can definitely provide a better update tomorrow.
This is sole source because again, there, we don't, we already have a existing system that needs to be upgraded.
And they're.
Yeah, Tag has been, the different phases of the wastewater, they were original programmer, they did the first phase of programming, we do all our in-house troubleshooting because they're the only program. We can't go out and get, there's like two or three others in Oregon, but it's all their own system, there's Rockwell, we got the automation group.
Thank you.
System, so it's almost like apples and apples.
It's more like a proprietary car, it's supposed for, we could, we could go out, but we would be completely we could win our system, so, and that's how they reach it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
The last meeting, I heard that we had a water plant that was sliding into a creek. Yeah. We are gonna need a bond rating at some point, so what's the status on our audits? Where are we right now?
Um, I have the R F P closing on Friday and I have, I'm in communications with three auditors, so I'm hoping we'll get a nice, good quote from that and then get started on that, so.
Good.
Yeah. Now, there are also, um, I've asked our water, our grant writers kind of store saying, hey, we're ready to water plant for our some infrastructure grants out there, that won't necessarily require us to have a bond rating, but it's only good to have one of that in the pocket.
Okay, um, let's move on to, I added, um, the application from William Masella to be on our budget committee and I know, uh, Bill from the, we used to have a financial advisory committee and he was very, very, uh, useful on that committee and so I, he's not able to be here to say, even that person, but I, I think about that he is. So, um, I'm okay with that, but you know, some people won't phone on their applications if they're not here and some we do and it seems relatively random because sometimes we, so we should probably have a policy about that. I'm okay with moving forward tonight, but, um, I kind of don't like the ad hoc nature of when we decide somebody can't, we can't act on something.
Yeah.
Whether it be applications or, um, you know, uh, applications to use the facilities or something like that.
Maybe, maybe that can be a work session.
Yes, is he the same one that used to be on, uh, the planning commission?
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah.
Mayor, I'd like to weigh in on your endorsement of my own. I was on that committee with Mr. Masella and he is, you know, leagues beyond the average person, he's, he's like really, really good. And as far as Council Rec's comment goes, I, I agree with her that, you know, uh, it's probably not a good thing to do that. I, that on the other hand, uh, when you know people, uh, you work with them, uh.
And we're budget.
That's, that's one thing, and, and if we don't know somebody, I, I wanna get to know them. But we know Mr. Masella and he is a key one candidate, so glad he's been on here.
I forgot that was tonight.
The board is not even here and I just go down.
Play it by ear.
I know, before we finish, I do wanna talk to you about the flashes.
Do you want me to dial nine one one?
It's all good to work.
You don't have to sit there with the C T.
Almost done.
We're all happy to have you there.
We made it this far.
We're stubborn creatures.
All in favor? Okay, is there a motion to accept the ballots as submitted?
I made a motion to accept, accept the ballots and, and we did.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the ballots, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Welcome, Bill. Okay, uh, project updates, have we all had a chance to read the updates? Still lots going on in our little city here.
I, I also want to, you know, to make sure that you saw that Kit, uh, our city planner, Kit Fox, provided that report that Council Daisy had mentioned at the last meeting regarding what they're maybe doing. He did two years, so, it's been a lot.
I wanna, uh, thank, would you thank, uh, the planner for me?
Thank you.
For doing this and, and it's had nothing to do with the planner, but my interest mainly in seeing trends. I think, uh, anybody on the city council who sits here now and past or in the future needs to see all of the information, financial and otherwise, that gives us some kind of predictive sense of what's going on in our town, and this is exactly what I was looking for, so if you would thank, I would appreciate it.
Is there any questions on the updates?
I did see the, um, one thing that was interesting was the counties permit to build the twelve, twelve unit affordable housing down here.
Mm-hmm.
That's cool.
Uh, you should see the drawing.
I'd love to see it.
We saw, I, I, we got a copy of it today, we met with the folks, uh, me, Kathy and Kit and Karen Rockwell and the project manager for the town home project that's going in down there. It was pretty good, if you'd like a copy, I will scan it and send it to everybody. It was pretty sharp, I thought, wow, I wanna live there.
The only thing about this, uh, it's in the urban renewal district, which means they don't pay tax, right?
I believe it is in the urban renewal district.
It is in the, so we wouldn't see any, we're not gonna realize any income into the urban renewal district from that property, but I think it's exciting, I wanna see more of that.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's gonna look really nice, they're really putting a lot of effort into it and they're also going to, um, have a chat with the folks at Little Elko to kind of get some feel for them, with them, to see if they can address any concerns the folks at Little Elko would have, if they have any of that going in there. We thought about, you know, an extra fence line, just to have that extra part, it's true. Um, they're talking about taking down trees, but they're also talking about replacing the trees they take down. So we're looking forward to get more information about that and, um, kids asked some.
And Kit's asking to do more about the matter, and they think it's gonna, I'm not sure if they're gonna make the May planning commission meeting, but it'll definitely be a change.
Just one question about this project, and I was part of that sixty-six million dollars in public housing that's been proposed for Longview County. Who, who owns this? Who manages this property?
The housing authority. The Oregon Housing Authority.
This used to be before the people who were displaced from the fires.
Right.
Now it's, it's a little different.
It is kind of early for them, you know, they're gonna try.
I asked that because everybody told me it was to replace those fires, but they don't, they have some people, but they think it'll be a mix of that plus affordable housing for middle, um, the income end. They have three vouchers for the lower income, right, I have thirty percent. It's a pretty good program.
Yeah, so it's not part of Little Well Co., but it's close to it.
Right, that's basic. Right up to their common area, I understand.
It was a tract of Little Well Co.
Yeah, it's kind of, right, it was a tract, mhm.
Okay, any other questions on updates? Um, are there any closing public comments?
Pardon me, Mayor, before we move on, I looked, I was thinking about the budget. Budget, oh, yeah, okay. Um, we had originally on the next meeting, April sixteenth, we said we would do the budget meeting at five. And this would be the budget for urban renewal and for the city. And I got to thinking, wait, I don't think the first meeting will be real long. It's normally just the presentation of the budget message and all that. Um, so I think we might be okay if we do it then, but I'm really concerned about the second one. And, cuz we also scheduled it to go before the May twenty-first meeting. And the second one is where you do more of a deep dive. I just think trying to squeeze us in an hour before the meeting, um, I just, we have to start at four, I, I think. So I'm hoping that either, maybe we can get both changed. It would be either on April eighteenth or May twenty-third. It's the following, it's that same week, but a third day. But I know some people have challenges with making those days, so. Um, we can still do the May, April sixteenth, that Tuesday, the, the hour. I think we'd be okay doing that, cuz that's when I present you the budget, you have it and then you'll have all, well, you set up that time for you to digest it, so.
Well, this is just our first look, right?
Right, the April sixteen, the other.
So.
I think that's fine, but should we, um, do you wanna do it on a Thursday or just move it, uh, another Tuesday night?
Right, you can move it another Tuesday night, sure.
So.
It's keep Tuesday.
But later in the mid, later in the month, so.
So should we do, um, May twenty-first then?
That's our council.
Yeah. May twenty-eighth, does that work?
That's right.
Tuesday, Memorial Day, right?
Right.
Okay. Does that work for you? A Tuesday night?
May twenty-eighth.
Sure, Tuesdays are always moving in time.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see.
Does that work for you? Um, we'll start. Okay.
And that's at five?
Yes, let's say five o'clock.
So right now it's the twenty-first and that will be canceled when we move to the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay, but.
Yeah.
I'll be in my apartment.
Brady will be halfway spot on if I like.
Are there any public comments then?
I'm sorry, we said a two-hour meeting then?
Yeah.
Probably a little bit, yeah.
Um, okay, council comments. I'm going to remind everyone that on Thursday at one-thirty, the task force for the, um, Green Resilience Grant is gonna be moving, meeting at the community center and presenting, and, um, I hope all of you can make it.
I'm sorry, what was it called?
The one, the information about the grant, um, from the task force.
At the council, the community.
To meet anyone.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have to, there has to be community involvement, so we need to show that we did something.
Are you guys in the, uh, will we receive a notice of this? Is this a public meeting?
It's, you, it's not, it's not the city doing this, it's this task force.
Yeah. It's the task.
So if you attend, it's more like an event and that's why you have that, um, you sign it original.
One-thirty Thursday.
Yeah.
How long are you thinking for lots?
Probably in the afternoon.
Okay.
This Thursday?
Yeah.
Yes.
She's gonna.
Okay, I can.
I'm gonna be late, but I'll show up.
Okay, okay, that would be great, thank you.
Is it gonna be, uh, every person?
Yeah. It'll, Jay will be there and I'll be.
It'll work, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council comments, do you want to start this evening?
Thank you, Mary, answered all my questions.
Okay. I'm a person. Nothing? Um, you know?
Sure.
Were you on the floor?
No, I, I didn't.
The parking lots were great, Brady, for that promo and, and Chinook and the, and the, uh, Manta.
Yeah.
And I started when we get public, like the rail, public park, that's really great. And I just wanted to let you know, um, I'm gonna, I had a quick meeting with Laura Johnson from DEQ. Um, and I came communicating with her, um, based on the conversation they had, Brady and Kim had had. Um, um, so working on a grant application based on those priorities that they set. Um, and our goal is to bring it to you, get it to you a few days before our next meeting so you can take a look at it and see if you wanna change things. And this is for that letter of interest for up to seventy-five thousand dollars to. So it looks like, um, what's being suggested is a much more detailed tax law analysis of both North Deepo Bay Creek and Rocky Creek, um, erosion. You would be seeing the broad overview about steep slopes and erosion and, um, but this would go into more depth by parcel, so we could do prioritization. And it would allow us to also get a first look at when was the last cut, how much time, how frequently has it been cut, you know? If it hasn't been cut recently, what's the age of the trees? And that'll help us get a ballpark figure on, um, what the value might be. So I'll bring that back to you next time. Oh, and the other thing is, one thing that hadn't come up with their discussion was, um, Laura asked us about, um, the interest in looking at water quantity. The other information we get to water quality about erosion, but, um, uh, there would be a hydro, if we wanted to get a hydrologic analysis that would let us know if we did. And it, uh, once the model is complete, you could ask questions like, what happens if you do a, um, a wider buffer versus getting the whole property? How much would that affect, um, water quantity by having, um, a buffer versus, you know, a, um, the, the property and things like that? And there's a, it was done in Southern Oregon with a group working down there. And there's a, um, Oregon State University Extension C Grant that they have access to students who do this analysis, so it would only be like fifteen thousand dollars. So we could request that as part of this letter of interest. So she was gonna draft something up, I'll, I'll fill in the grant application and like I said, we'll get it to you a few days before our meeting, so you can take a look at it, you can go from there.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
While I'm sl- Counselor, um, I'm for this. I voted for this. I think we should get planning on this. But where's the money gonna come from for purchasing large squats of commercial forest? Yeah, how do you do that? That's, I've always wondered, that's why I've always said, maybe there's a, a cheaper way to do it, like through, um, legislation or application of current laws or, or agreements with the, the landlords, which from what I've heard is they're, they're very eager to enter into it. So where does the money from these?
Well, um, the water watershed enhancement board is just finalizing rules to allow money to get both through watershed, um, protection projects for drinking water. There's EPA money, there's a whole list of grant sources. Um, it looks like we're probably not eligible for the revolving loan because we can't take out a loan unless we go for a, like, or something like that, um, to the voters, but, um, so we wouldn't be, and that would even be just like a short-term loan, cuz then we'd get fifty percent knocked off right from the top. But unless we go out for a bond measure or, or vote, people ask me if we can take on, you know, debt. You know, we wouldn't be able to do that route. But there's private foundations, there's this new state money and then EPA money. So it's, yeah, everything's expensive, so. And other communities are doing it, um, they're helping Schooner, Linden City acquired Schooner Creek. So that's a way bigger watershed than ours. They've done it to have the Reed's Ford, I think it's Pro Lurk or the one or the other. So a lot of people are trying to protect their watersheds, but, um, I don't know what the money's coming from. It's gonna be expensive, so I think it's gotta be a mixture between easements and working with people and things like that. But I think this planning thing will get us to know what our highest priorities in the watershed are in terms of.
Thank you.
The watershed.
Yeah.
Um, I had a citizen ask me about the status of food trucks in Deepo Bay. And I said, it hasn't come up since I've been on council, but I would ask about it cuz I don't know what the correct rules are.
We don't have food trucks.
I know, I know.
All my first special.
Such as.
All the trucks. Is there any, um, possibility of having them?
I believe it's part of an ordinance, not belonging.
Part of the ordinance.
Right, so we just have to decide whether or not we can do part of the research and discuss whether or not, what one would look like, whether or not council would appropriate that. Cuz I've seen them, that, you know, that has, I'm sure that Linden City and, uh, people have something. I think there's some food cart cars in some of these places. Anything else? Oh, Brady, at this rate, yeah.
Thanks for coming and being an audience.
Thank you, yes.
Bless you guys, doing great work, thank you so much, appreciate it, good job.
That my vote?
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I just think, thanks for being here. Thanks for coming here.